Great job. Great job. Thank you so much for bringing one over for us.
All right, thank you. Privately to the floor, do we have anybody signing for the floor? Anybody want to speak? Next, mayor's report. Baseball, that's one thing. So a couple of things happened since our last meeting and just want to update a couple of things. So we had a firefighter graduation, two candidates graduate in Auburn. Deputy Mayor went, myself and chief and some others. It was great to see that in Auburn. We had touch truck, which, you know, town chief Reynolds and the youth bureau did a great job in coordinating that, working that together. That was a huge success. We estimated 2500, somewhere in there, people in attendance. Yeah, it was beautiful. It was a beautiful day and comments and compliments. People loving, I think a lot of it's getting out and the kids were just loving it. Have all these toys and have all these things to be able to do it.
Big toys.
Yeah, big toys. I had these toys at home, now I get to be in them. So it was pretty cool. It was more fun to ask them which was their favorite. So I think we'll do a total next, a poll next year to see which ones are our favorite. Dairy parade went really well. We got a little clean window of no rain. That was a great, exciting time, too. It was fun doing it backwards. We had some constituents that are concerned in that district, Carpenter's district, that were concerned. And but in the end, I went to their porches afterwards and they loved it and they excited if we do it again next time. So it really went pretty well. I think it was just maybe a little hiccup and get people out of there at the end. Overall, I think it went exceptionally well and I think it was a good turnout. It was a great turnout, fan wise. I think we'll get more participation next year and try to do some more things. Fair organized, did a wonderful job, ended up at the fairground, it was awesome. St. Anthony's was a good success, that was great to see. And so, and a reminder that Juneteenth, I think those tents are set up for that on Saturday already. That's out here at the courthouse park on this weekend, so make sure we also get to that on the 10th. Construction updates. Clinton Ave project is on to phase three, which is the improvements, which is the crosswalks and pavement striping and plantings down the, from the off the place up to church is, they're working on those improvements now. And then the sanitary sewer installation above Elm Street and Main Street. The storms sort of take place in the church street of Clinton. So it's a little bit congested in that area. Again, go to the corona rising.com website to get traffic updates on a daily basis to help you with making sure you can get to where you need to go in the easiest manner that's possible. That's going to be an important update there. Obviously, we'll talk about the Main Street project here a little bit. Quick update on the gas lines are, they're up to the second half, down to the second half, that was down the second half of Main Street working down. So they're going pretty well. There's some interruptions, but we're still trying to work on that. But it seems to be working well, communicating with everybody through the Yes, that's all I have for the mayor's report. On the finance report, just a couple of key notes and everybody got that copy of their finances. Employee benefits still remains high, which is, was under budgeted, estimated $250,000. DPW is creeping up. We'll have a meeting about that next week to work on some other things and bond resolutions. And of course, our insurance is up as well, both employee and health. So those benefits are creeping up on us and continual problems that we have to face. But everything else seems to be on target or on task based on what we have and what we need to have. So those are all questions on the finance report? All right, so we're on the ward reports.
I'd like to say we've been quiet for one, however, we've had incidents called in twice at the same intersection, corner of Madison and Hamlet, stop signs being blown through. Been addressed by the police department, it's been addressed by the mayor's office. Some stop signs with flashing lights are in route. Whenever those come back in stock, we'll be taking care of it that way to make sure that is highlighted. I'd just like to ask the community, anybody who's listening and anybody who talks to anybody who isn't listening, be aware, we're in the season now where kids get out in the road. You know, kids are playing, they drop a ball, they don't always pay attention. We're blowing through stop signs. It's pretty dangerous. It happens to be at the end of my, you know, part of my street, but I'm not the one witnessing the worst of these. In fact, I believe the mayor was actually visiting with one of the constituents there while a stop sign got blown. And it's becoming quite a thing. So I hope the stop sign is coming soon. I hope we're able to take care of those as fast as possible. They do appreciate you. By the way, this was done weeks ago, ordering these things. You know, everything is slow right now. On a, on a better note, I got to be part of a little rescue outside of the ward, which was a lot of fun. I'd like to thank the local D E C officers that assisted in getting the fawn off of Main Street. Came up through the construction zone. Had a lot of people calling me who knew me. I don't know who I should call, let me call you. We were originally told, just leave it alone, which is the right protocol. Leave it alone, but then when it's walking up to the edge of six, seven, eight foot holes, it's around construction equipment, it's not afraid. D C did decide after I called the second time to come and I met them. Took us quite a while to locate it and then the next thing we knew, the little fawn was on Main Street and they don't have any traffic lights. So as it darts through traffic and three, three people are running behind it to try and catch it. D C did a great officer, great job. First officer got there, actually caught it with a giant fishing net. And then they wrapped her up in a blanket and we walked her back to where we parked on Church Street and started the search. Nice thing was, is the follow up report was, the fawn was released. They had found a doe wandering around down towards Pendleton. She went back toward the river and the fawn was accepted. So she immediately linked up with the fawn, so it leads them to believe that that actually was the mother. Best guess is a dog, a person down by the river spooked the fawn out of where it was left to bed and the doe went looking for it in the wrong direction and the fawn decided, well, Asian delicious was the place to hang out. Good news is it didn't end up on the menu.
Wait, were you chasing?
I was.
Oh, did anybody have video?
What camera anyway?
I, no, no. Please chief.
So that's a tough one to follow. Appreciate that, that was a great story to hear the ending. I didn't know the rest of it. I didn't know that there was accepting back. Often concerned about that.
That was the final report I got yesterday.
Goodness, thank you for that.
So it's quiet in Ward two. However, one rental agency's crew surprised a squatter in a rental house. The police responded. Everyone is very aware of people who are unknown and lingering in the neighborhood. I'd also like to thank DPW for the removal of over 40 pairs of shoes from power lines. And I'd like to suggest that other people who have student housing in particular, but maybe rental housing, look up and see if you've got shoes named through the power lines. I'd also like to thank DPW for the brush pickup. And the gardens are looking good. I got one call from a constituent, constituent on Maple. He wanted to know that we were following through with what the neighborhood wanted for Parker School. I assured him that we were meeting and working on it. He was also concerned about getting rid of bluebacks and hoping that special kittens wouldn't be required in the future. He said he and his wife are elderly and he can't move those big things around very easily. And he wanted to know if Maple was going to tape this year and have the answer is yes in August. So that's the end of the report for the second one.
Thank you. Ward three, do you know?
So Ward three has been quiet, still ongoing interactions and communications with codes and some of my constituents. But I also would like to report that today, the Friends of the Library was installed at the Water Works and we will be putting books in tomorrow. And so it's there. And I want to thank the OC and BOC's teacher and the students who put it together and then they installed it this afternoon. So it's there.
Thank you for that. Ward four, Miss Lane.
Ward four also been quiet. Traffic is always greatly reduced once the college graduates. I had a constituent on Park Street who voiced some concerns about grass and a pool. And I called code or I saw code and within 24 hours it was dealt with, tickets were issued. So great job by code. We had a doe on our, on the railroad tracks behind the house. So it might have been the mom. But she was ways away from, from the river. Constituent on York Street had questions about a property on Broadway that was dealt with as well. And that's about it for the fourth ward.
Great, thank you. Ward six, I'll call in the sixth ward. I did go to the Randall School event, Tommy and I. Andrea did a great job with you here, putting that on. And there were quite a few people there. There's a bunch of diagrams and a bunch of, they're voting on it as to what to select on that park. Oxycross, football, tennis, all sorts of stuff that is pretty good for that park. There's quite a history here at that park, so I'm glad that something's been done. Tommy and I have been working on that for 10 years. So it'll be good when it's done. So, and that's all I have.
Okay, Ward seven. Just like to praise Scott, whoever was in charge of moving the dairy parade and appreciation around who came up with the idea of putting all the flags up. Sorry. Just a comment on your guess. He said, you know, second half is being done, but right now they're just doing the mains, they're not doing the laterals yet, or?
They have tied in the other buildings on the
So they're addressing some as they go.
Yeah, they've done all the mains and now they're going back and tying over this next.
Having a problem with one house over in Cleveland and between the attorney, the police department and mayor's office, code office, I think we're getting a handle on it. I'm sure the lady, just give us some more time and it'll be gone. So, I mean, that's all I have.
We are, we're still following up on the motorcycle. It's been speeding down our street now for several weeks. Police, police has a handle on this now. We actually have an idea of who the individual is. It's just kind of catching up with this individual to let him know that there are speed limits within the city. Some populated issues. I just want to note that the certain house on Keller Road, still a concern. Do want to thank those involved for removing all the debris around the house that the neighbors were complaining about. Just have a few other things now to kind of tidy up and try to get that spread around. DPW issues. Well, students, I want to thank those guys for jumping in, over cleanup for William and Green Bush. We also had some debris alongside the curb. It was compacted to the point where the street sweeper couldn't catch it. So these items probably had to be shoveled, shoveled up and taken away. Now that's been taken care of now, so those residents should be able to sleep at night. Billy Man mentioned the Randall Park renovation. I spoke with Dan from the group that were contract engineering firm, contracted with. He says it's one of the largest turnouts he's ever, ever seen doing a presentation like this. He couldn't believe the amount of people that came out that night. And of course, it was a gorgeous night besides. Attended Frankman's dinner the other night while attended. Always enjoy seeing some of the retirees there that were pretty much on board when I first came in all of them. And it's nice to catch up with them at this time of year. That's all I have. Other than, I do want to catch up with our DPW again. I've been toying with the idea of making four-way stops along Church Street between Fort Watson and Huntington. Want to get a feel before I dive into this residents thing and whether, this is doable. Last time we did the speed checks, we, we had someone flag over 104 miles an hour going down Church Street. This was the last one we did last fall. So we're hoping they come up with another plan. This, this may be way to resolve this. That's all I have for the night. Thank you.
Thank you. Also thank you for helping with the flags. Kevin, Mayor helped with that. Mr. Dexter, Mr. Nichols and the DPW for putting them up and installing, of course, at such a last minute. We're trying to, we put together a program that's kind of outdated and lost over a period of time to replace our flags, replenish our flags. We're trying to get some community involvement to invest in that to make that happen. Ultimately, the goal, my goal would be to get all the gateways. So coming down, all the way down Clinton or Watson at the top. It looks so nice. Get under the lit poles or farmer, it does, it just adds a little class. It's great to have that happen. Thanks for everybody for rushing to make that happen, just feel free.
I actually, I was first down there when they were installing some of the first ones. And actually, a contractor had come out of this house and stood there and saluted it as a, as a hug it. I wish I had taken a picture of that. He couldn't thank us enough for placing those down through there.
That was a sentence of August up. Approval of minutes, can I get a motion? Mr. Beckwith, the cell man? Questions, all of the bear? Item number one, sidewalk program conflict of interest disclosure. Resolve that it's hereby disclosed to the common council and to the public that Patson Sorrels, Derek Reynolds, Andrea Pettigrossi and Linda Pettigrossi have ties to the city of Portland, having ties to the city of Portland, and submitted applications for funding through the city sidewalk program. And be it further resolved that the common council, upon the opinion of council letter, concur that their participation does not violate city or state law. And that said, applications may be accepted pursuant to the established policies of the program. Can I get a motion, Mr. Carpenter? Mr. Michaels? Yeah, so the idea here is all these advocates have been pre-qualified for participation in city sidewalk. And whereas there are some relations and or these are employees to the city, that this notification is to let anybody know that if there's any objections or questions on this regarding this thing, contact Tom or the mayor's office directly to address their questions and or concerns. Any questions?
May know, I was in a similar situation here a few years ago. And the same thing came before council. Please keep in mind that even though these are city employees, Russell taxpayers, they actually own property within the city and they certainly have a right to this program, just like anyone else.
But no, but the law requires us to disclose it.
Yeah, that's correct.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Silliman. Councilmember Pennello.
Aye.
Remember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number two, authorized agreement with Syracuse Signal for traffic signal upgrade project in the intersection of Elm and Pomeroy Streets.
Resolve that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign an agreement with Syracuse Signal for replacement of a traffic signal in the amount of $96,155.54, the work will commence within 60 days.
Motion, Mr. Scott, second and Silliman, questions?
Probably be a question for Nick. I'm good with everything on here. Doesn't state striping after it's done. I know we normally do the striping, but since we're going to have a new light up, I was just hoping that the striping could be done as soon as the light's activated. Rather than waiting when you go around with the rest of the striping, just so that way people know the crosswalk, divine crosswalks and stuff.
Absolutely. I also just wanted to assure you folks, I've talked to the engineers and G D V and Cennis, because that's the detour for the gateway. They're talking about the trenching for that, doing one side then the other. It's only going to be a day, they're going to flag it, they don't see that as a huge problem. When they put the pads and the poles in, they're going to be behind the existing so they can keep the intersection on until they're ready to make their changeover, which also is to be a day. So I think it's a pretty good project, pretty good bang for our buck. We thought it would come in between 80 and 100, came in on the high end. But I think that the people in that neighborhood would be happy that they're going to get some pedestrian crosswalks. And that signal is, I think, one of, if not the last, those green aluminum poles that are, I think that's the last intersection. There might be one, one other straight pole out there up near the high school, but that's just on the flasher. We've also had problems with the, with this light before, where it went out for the whole weekend or a week at a time and we had to put, you know, temporary four-way stops up. So I think this, this will be a benefit.
And the last time when we were looking at this and we did the four-way stop down the next intersection, that price came in at 125. So this is actually a gamble, which I'm surprised you didn't believe.
So the good thing is, the, the DOT, this is chips reimbursable. The DOT never lets us use any used products anywhere. If you buy stuff, it's got to be new because of supply chain issues. They said that we could use refurbished poles that are painted that saved us like $30,000. So.
There it is.
Yeah.
I was surprised to see it.
As long as they had a life expectancy of over 10 years. And my understanding is, is what Syracuse Signal is going to provide is almost new.
Why are your constituent in contact that was concerned that there would be flashing stop signs?
Sure.
Anybody else? Yeah, that's understood. It's in the minutes that the striking will be done.
After that, I don't need to want to do a rest, since we got a new signal, but I just right now there's no cross.
No, no lines. Good point, good point. Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Silliman.
Aye.
Councilmember Pennello.
Aye.
Remember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number three, authorized agreement with Adham piping for curb and sidewalk ramp replacement projects.
Resolve that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign an agreement with Adham piping in the amount of $775,000 for removal of existing curbing, installation of new curbing and replacement or rehabilitation of curb ramps.
Motion, Mr. Beckwith, Mr. Scott. Mr. Doby, you want to address this real quick?
Sure. Yeah, so as you're going to see on the, the next resolution, it's basically our fund balances for, for the majority of our work. You've got chips, P P York, E W R, 200 money funds most of our internal projects, if you will. What we thought this year, what we wanted to do the last couple of years, but we were unable to, was have a well-rounded program that maybe we tackle a traffic signal, we track, we do some curbing, we do some asphalt on streets that were doing water main. And this all basically ties together. In this specific instance, we're doing 5,500, 100 lineal feet of curbing and 75 curb ramps around the city to make them ADA compliant. We got three bids. I thought they were pretty competitive. We had the lowest with Adham at 775, then Slip Forum at just over a million, and then Millennium at 1.4. So not a bad bang for your buck, I don't think. The streets that we are going to curb, and I totally understand that we're doing three streets and about 30 needed, but it's expensive. We chipped away at this little bit of time. Yeah, we're doing the upper ends of Maple and Lincoln as those streets exploded over the winter. And we're also doing the north end to finish floral. So floral from basically rotten to West Main will be completely new curb and new asphalt. And then those other couple of streets that we targeted as we did our street assessment for the year, those streets popped out. They weren't originally on our list, they're really bad and they need no utility work. So that's why we targeted them for the curbing. We shouldn't have to be cutting into them anytime soon. The only thing that's happening is if we can get the project fully funded, there will be some work on the Maple Ave Bridge at some point. But I don't think it's going to have a super impact of what we're doing.
The only question I have in this dollar amount, I was assigned this package, I'm sure you'll handle this, but make sure that everything spelled out. I don't see it.
The 775, so again, it may be that's my fault. The, we put an R F P out for the traffic signal, we put an R F P out for the curbing and ramps. And obviously, later in this package, you're going to talk about the D R I, put an R F P out for that. Everything was on the contract reporter. Everything came back according to kind of what we somewhat expected with some of my price rates. But we're, we're pretty content that out of the almost $2 million allocated from the state, that we got a pretty good program on for this.
Yeah, if there's details wanted at any time on these projects, which will be out in the reports. Projects go, it'll display where the money's spent.
Yep.
Part of it, we do that if you look at the beginning of your finances, there is that. And it's very great that Adham got this one because they are local. They have a lot of local people, local owners and local people that are, you know, eating diner, their company.
Actually from these stores, going to raise them. The thing is, if anybody wants additional information, we, I know I sent it, or Al sent it out a while ago, but the breakdown of streets and the costs and all that stuff, we have all that information.
I know it was there, I just wanted to make sure that any other people know that we're not voting on something right. Don't say what we're doing.
Yep. And we can get you that information. Al prides himself on being a little more tech savvy than me. I'm not sure if that's true, but he's got a lot of information generated and it was a great help to share.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Silliman. Councilmember Pennello.
Aye.
Remember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Agenda item number four, amended 2022 adopted general fund budget for increases in the New York State 2022, 2023 for assistance for city street repairs.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of the Public Works Commission, that the city's 2022 general fund adopted budget be amended to reflect the following uses of available funding. Now wave the reading of those.
Okay, can I get a motion? Carter, Mr. Michaels? If you have any questions to this, I think you could address this before Mr. Doby.
It's a pretty lengthy. It's a pretty lengthy resolution. I understand it might look confusing. All we did was we took all the rollover from last year, added this year's. Funding allocations for the DOT and then put it in the exact same format as, as we typically do so that you can see. What the chips amount is, EWR, Cape New York, and there's a new one this year, the pop funding. I believe it's for pop holes, but not for pop holes, but it's all on here.
And again, that goes to that agenda I already said.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Silman. Councilmember Penello. Member Lane. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number five, authorized agreement with CCI Companies Inc. for construction related to the downtown revitalization.
Resolve that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an agreement with CCI Companies Incorporated in the amount of eleven. Eleven million eight hundred forty-four thousand four hundred thirty dollars and eighty-three cents. For construction work related to the downtown revitalization initiative project. And be it further resolved that the mayor is authorized to allocate the necessary funds from the city's WIFIA loan. In an amount of up to one million five hundred thousand dollars to cover the shortfall in DRI allocated funds for this project. And execute required documentation, if any, to facilitate the same.
Any other motion? Just real quick, so the weep of money that we have left over, it looks like it's a, of two point six million dollars that we have. Hopefully we can allocate that to a couple of the projects we have because this came over budget, obviously it's from the time that was planned on downtown. For what we're going to do on that project to where we are today. So. That's why the last part of that resolve is a one point five million dollars to try to allocate that towards the under dollar amount. So that's where that money is going to come from this, from that we do, we follow. So we actually have that loan that we have available funds on. To that, to pay for that construction and it fits within that realm of that and bond council has already pre-approved it. So that's how we can fund the project that's technically already started before we could really. So we're kind of committed to doing it. So that's how I determined to take care of the shortfall. From what the budget amount is, and there's a little bit of cushion there in case we do run into something more. At this point, we don't know. I've been looking for the tracks as we go here, but I haven't seen them yet. Doing the gas lines, but. So this, this will get them going. We had a pre, pre-construction meeting with this group to get them involved. I've done some background group, group. Research on CCI, even with local asphalt vendors in the community and they're very high stakes on these guys and they're very committed. And the first meeting went very well to be doing that. We have another one, I think. Friday, this Friday, to get things rolling. So upon your approval, of course. Look forward to having it. The timeframe, that's the meeting Friday is to get that. We'll certainly keep everybody updated monthly on this. It's going to be hugely important to doing it. But they assured us that product availability and everything was good. They assured us that their attention detail would be good and it's on the schedule to be started quickly. And it's just a matter of just getting it and coordinating so.
Will it be addressed real quick when the weekend of the college gets to come back? I mean, everybody's going to suffer downtown, but is there any way that weekend?
When we did, yeah, we did graduation. I don't remember that, but we did a graduation and the contractors now very grateful. Communicated ahead of time. They pulled all their equipment out. Nick and crew brought the sweep, street sweeper down, cleaned it up. We're trying to do the best we can. Again, to keep all the, I think this Thursday night, there's a thing at the red jug, so if anyone wants to go to that, certainly come to that. It's a four to seven, thank you. So four to seven, and that's to get the local businesses and the contractors involved. So we're trying, you know. Take credit for it, but the, we're trying to do that once a month now. So we're trying to get so that the flag persons that are working the flags. So maybe we get a little bit more smile from them when they're doing, just make it a little bit nicer. So it seems to be. I actually bought him cups of coffee and brought gift certificates for coffee and tried it, iced tea or whatever they want. To try and get them to go to the local businesses and do two, two-fold with that. So, so we're trying to have innovative ideas to get people down there. We don't want people to think downtown's closed for the next two years, so it's going to be a huge impact. So we'll make sure we have lots of dialogue with everybody here and everybody. To make sure that that happens. We need our businesses to thrive. We need to come up with more innovative ideas like touch a truck event that brings people down here and makes it more exciting. So that's going to be our center of focus for sure. No, but that's the point. Any other questions?
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Silman. Councilmember Penello. Member Lane. Councilmember Carpenter. Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Agenda item number six, authorized execution of collective bargaining agreement on behalf of the city of Portland with the Portland Police Benevolent Association.
Resolve that the collective bargaining agreement between the Portland Police Benevolent, Benevolent Association. And the city of Portland's hereby approved and ratified. And be it further resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute said collective bargaining agreement. On behalf of the city of Portland with the Portland Police Benevolent Association Incorporated. For a period dated January first, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, Mr. Beckwith and Mr. Scott.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to go into executive session to discuss this contract.
Yeah, so. And I, I respect that call, but before we make, get a second to that motion, I just want to make sure it's clarified that this document is public. It has been ratified by the Police Benevolent, so the way I, I look at it is like unless it's really a personnel. I don't, because it is a public document, it should be discussed publicly. We, we put it out publicly. So unless there would be a certain personnel concern or some problem, I'll be glad to talk about all the details. Mr. Carpenter was there as well. I think our attorney is dealing with something right now, but I would be glad to talk about anything open. If you think there's a specific issue you want to talk about, I'd be glad to do it.
I'm just interested in what the major concessions were at the both sides.
Yeah, so let me update you that, certainly. Trying to do that, Mr. Carpenter will step in, I think at any point. So I kind of write, write down the highlights because there's a lot there. And so, and it was a lot of work and I certainly want to express the appreciation. With Sergeant Burns and Officer Fitz, Officer Fitz carried a torch and Officer, Sergeant Burns carried a torch across the line. And you know, there was some tenuous times I wanted to tell you and, but I think we all shook hands and respectfully agreed in the end to what needs to happen. But I think that's what happens in good negotiations, not necessarily always, you know, peaches and roses. So. But in the end, I feel like, you know, it's, it's a tough situation because we have to show appreciation. You know, we need to show appreciation for what they do on a daily basis. Their job is extremely difficult, extremely tenuous. And you know, they're putting a lot of duress and have to make the perfect decision every time. And I think that's difficult and to not respect that or appreciate that, you know, I mean, if I was. I wasn't negotiating for the protection of our constituent taxpayers, I would give it the world, but we can't do that. We have to be. You know, proactive and we have to be responsible at the same time. We have, you know, I have a responsibility, we have a responsibility financially. To keep this city solvent and that's to their best interest as well. So I just kind of went through some highlights and certainly if there's anything else that Mr. Carter could weigh in or even Mr. or Sergeant Burns is in the audience. So probably the biggest issue would be the pay scale. Obviously, there's a pay scale competition in the police industry right now. And it's, it's, it's as local as our sheriff's department. That was a big, big, they made a big bump, big increase. So, you know, we, we don't want to lose our persons to them. You know, Auburn just ratified, if they could have just had a contract, I think they were out for a long period of time. And they just ratified and made a huge jump as well to the north, you know, our county sheriff's is pretty aggressive. And we've lost people to Camillus, Townsend, Nellis, to other places like that. So what do we have to do to retain them, you know? I mean, I think, you know, Portland's a great place to live. It's, you know, active, it's, but it's not as active as some of the other big cities. But we have a lot of other benefits to add. So pay scale was a big thing. So basically to simplify the base deal ended up. What, what we did was we compressed, so we compressed one step over on every, everyone. So one-year officer would be moving down to that. You know, or a two-year officer, one-year, et cetera, et cetera. The, and then on the consecutive years after that, there'll be, there's a retro for last year, which is a single dollar amount, twenty-five hundred dollars. That was a retro amount for last year. And again, remember it's a whole big package. That might sound like. A bad deal for them, but in the end, it's a whole big package. We're looking at the future and I feel like that was done in good faith by both sides. Then on this year, the retro to date, because we're halfway through the year, is basically we're going to take the difference between their current salary. And what their salary is proposed on this, and we divided by two, which is half the year, and they get that difference. The idea there is if you had to go back and try to qualify overtime, OIC pay, which is always a charge pay, and all those other things, it gets pretty complicated. So we just decided to do it that way to make it easier, cleaner and neater. So it's a free stuff. So half of the pay, current pay plus twenty-five hundred dollars. That, the next, there's a three percent increase. Twenty twenty-three, then a two percent twenty-four, then a two percent twenty-five. We also extended the length of the contract, which is a little bit longer so that we get to it, give it administration a chance to adapt. And adopt based on what we end up having here, instead of coming in in January and trying to figure this out, get grounded in five months. So, so that's the other part. Longevity, it starts at the ninth year instead of the previous years. So they were basically getting longevity at an earlier time. That was a give-up, shape-up briefing is used as comp time and done on a quarterly basis. In the past, it was all comp time, like comp or cash out, but they had to do it by the end of that quarter. And that keeps us so we actually have more officers on the street at all times. That was the ultimate goal.
Can I ask about that?
Correct, shift, so the other changes. So. In the, in the previous contract, they were allotted eighty-eight hours because if you take fifteen minutes. For shit. And they get it, it's technically time and a half because it's after their eight hours, for their eight hours. So basically the shape-up time is for anybody who doesn't understand this, when they come in and they get briefed on what happened before, what's happened after. And you know, the direct is there. It's important and it, and it's, that's absolutely a hundred ten percent necessary. So in the past, they were given eighty-eight hours that they could get at the end of the year. Just pay, cash it out or just take time off. And never to try to keep bodies here and keep this, you know, people here, so we're working and not getting all that time off. We gave the option to do that. And that, that benefit is based off the time and a half. So that's what the ship of.
It does. I was just wondering, is it time and a half or just fifteen minutes?
Yes, it adds up to be time and a half, which is twenty-three minutes, I think twenty-two point something minutes, twenty-three minutes of time technically. That they get allotted, but they have to show up. Before they would just get it automatically, and, and if there were vacation days, they were still getting it and whatever. So now it's basically that. That's part of their show up time. The, the, the elimination of the desk officer and putting them out into the street. Which allows us to give another officer on the street so that raise our minimums to another officer. Which helps in the long term of things. The deadly force stipend was now taken away. That's part of the pay because deadly force stipend is basically when they qualify in training. It's a requirement to be a police officer, so really seeing need to be paying a stipend for that. And that's part of that package. Just a quick reminder, everybody needs to sign the packet. Even though there's a lot of firefighters in there. And then again, there were some stipends in there for EMS, just remember to get them worked out. That's part of that packet. So if everybody get them signed before you go. The minimum personnel wording was cleaned up, so it's very clear and concise so that everybody understands that. The grievance procedure and arbitrator, the arbitrator was changed, the company with arbitration, who it goes to. And grievance procedure was cleaned up a little bit more so that there's more clear definition on how to resolve problems and do it more. Friendly, more consistent manner so that nobody feels bad about talking about what their issues are and what they have to. In the longer, longer time period of the contract. The road sergeants, we're going to eight-hour shifts for the new road sergeants. That's correct. So, yeah, so there, the road sergeants were ten hours, ten-hour shifts in previous. There are some grandfathered in, we let that go because we didn't want to take, to do that, so there's three. We, that were maintained, and then all the road sergeants that will be able to back to the eight-hour shifts. You just gotta, Mary, you just gotta, we gotta understand, everybody at council has to understand, you gotta compete these days. With other law enforcement agencies to pay. We're losing officers to other departments. That's the way it is. You've got, you've got to raise the salaries and to compete. And we're a busy department, we're a busy place. When you go to other departments that aren't so busy, they're making more money. Why wouldn't they go there? So that's how you lose officers. So, and you're only taking, you have twenty-five people to do civil services. So, I mean, nobody wants to be a police officer. So it's, it's tough. So we gotta keep people.
If I could just point out one thing. This weekend, from what I understand, was the first weekend that. Stampede was all manned by female officers. I gotta believe that's, that's of first importance history. And that's something to be proud of.
Yeah, we got some great, great department. I met with the judges today on unrelated, they were just really crazy. And they're just saying how great they are to work with, how professional they are. So that's great to hear from all aspects. I'm sure you all hear it, the citizens as well. So I think that, that part yields to the expense that we all know we're going to have to buck up for this next year, next few years and upcoming. So I appreciate that. And you know, the good news is, Mr. Carpenter, to add on to that, is we did have a police officer that had pulled out. To go to the state police that has come back. So that just happened. So that, that's a big, that's a good sign. And that says something to the brotherhood, that's sisterhood down there. The, the, the family environment that's down there and as well as to, to the, you know, the commitment and the support that they have.
One thing I say about the police department, I haven't seen in quite a while, that I think Tom was there, obviously St. Anthony's this weekend. There was a bunch of new guys walking around. They made a point to talk to people. And I tell you what, that meant a lot. Very respectful, you know, just good PR.
Community policing.
Everybody very accepted and just. I can't say enough.
It's pretty exciting. But in a good way, right? So, does anything else? Sergeant Burns, did you think anything I should add to your group of that? Anything else I should add? You gave up that I didn't tell, it's surrender.
Hello, everybody. I'm Sean Burns. I've worked for the department for seventeen years. I took over as the VP of President so that I could give Jeff Fitz a little relief from the two years of negotiations we've gone through already. Here and have two years, trying to wrap this up. I hope, I hope and pray we wrap this up tonight. I really want to go back to the table. We've had back and forth. Over a lot of issues. I believe there was a lot of exchange on both sides. I believe the hallmark of a good deal is both sides walk away and no one's claiming victory. I don't feel like I'm claiming victory. The only victory that I'd like to claim or hopefully claim. Is that we make the city safer and in today's society and what people are, are requiring of police officers. We need police officers that are more educated. We need police officers that are more dedicated and experienced. We need more police officers that are willing to do the job, but are also have the skills and the capabilities and the training to do it. I believe that's, it's really important that we attract the best talent that we can. To keep our community as safe as we can. I believe the mayor has stuck his neck out there. To go towards putting more police officers on the street and to put a higher quality level. I believe the mayor has stuck his neck out there to go towards putting more police officers on the street and to put a higher quality level of policing available to the community. And I I hope you ratify our contract because I think it's a fair deal.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Did I answer your questions?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else? This is a pretty important thing, but it's worth that. All right, no call.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Silliman.
Aye.
Councilmember Pinello.
Aye.
Member Lanning.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Congratulations, thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven, appoint Portland Youth Bureau Deputy Director. Resolve what the common council does hereby approve the promotion of Heather Johnson as Portland Youth Bureau Deputy Director effective June fourteenth twenty twenty two, with a salary of fifty seven thousand dollars.
Miss Lanning? Mr. Beckwith? Got a grocery, can you step up? So this is part of a restructuring effort. And you can address that.
Yeah, so when John retired, I thought it was important to review the organization Youth Bureau and our staffing. We're very rep heavy right now and the deputy director position has been vacant since two thousand thirteen when Seth Scott retired. I feel it's important to have this position filled, to have another administrator in the office to assist with those needs. We currently have two recreation supervisors, myself and Heather, who I hope you appoint as deputy director tonight.
And this is a changing, exchanging a position in the long term, it saves us money, so it is a restructuring effort to do that, make that restructuring effort, so that's probably important as well.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Silliman.
Aye.
Councilmember Pinello.
Aye.
Member Lanning.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
All right, discussion items, discussion item number one, Director Administrative Finance, I don't know if you're prepared to talk about this, Penello?
I am, I am, so the Executive Personnel Committee has a rough draft of the new job description and we're going to be discussing it at our next meeting next week, as a matter of fact. So and hopefully we'll be able to bring back to this, to the common council at the first July meeting, job description, so that's, that's the plan, so we're definitely moving forward and we've got the draft.
Questions? Okay, discussion item two, Parker School Ad-Hoc Planning Committee, I've not been involved yet as their spokesperson, if you wanted to have, want to talk to them. That'd be great.
So, Councilmember Pinello has taken excellent notes on our two meetings. Our most most recent meeting was at Parker School. We walked through the school, the two agencies, CAPCO and YW, were discussing what areas they'd be interested in, some definite issues to consider, our security issues. Like the elevator, it's very small and outdated. They either need a sprinkler sprinkler system or they need exterior doors. Luckily, we have a builder on the committee, who's Mr. Beckwith, who's very helpful with thinking in terms of costs and and that perhaps putting in a sprinkler system might be more beneficial than building ramps and doors for outside egress or pulling cribs out. So they have to think through all of these issues and so the next thing that's going to happen is the YW sending all of the data from their architect over to Mr. Beckwith, who's going to send it to an engineer that he knows, is that correct? Who's going to look at it? Have you contacted him?
I've got anything, yeah.
Okay, so when he gets that, he's going to contact him and hopefully that'll be done pro bono. We just want to see because the the costs were all factored on, you know, the cost of a few years ago. So now we have to recalculate those costs and we're hoping that this engineer can do that for us. And then CAPCO and YW will look at what they can do with today's climate and we're thinking about who else could share the building. So we have to really proceed carefully. We have a blueprint for proceeding, but we can't follow it exactly because things have changed. And both agencies are dealing with a different, different financial climate than they were. And so we're just really careful in that. Would you like to add anything to that?
The only thing I'd like to add to that is what I sense out of me is that they're really scared of the nuts.
Really?
I do, you know, I just, I think that maybe second thoughts, scared, the way, you know, what happened with COVID, I just, I don't know, so we'll see. Soon they get that report, I'll get it sent out to somebody if they're willing to do it, we'll see what the new cost is and then we'll go from there. But the other thing I did get out of it is point blank say that, you know, they're not going to be able to utilize the whole building, so they're going to have to look for other tenants, so this is the move forward.
Right.
So I think I pretty much told them that, so.
They they knew that, that was the expectation at the very beginning when we started this whole thing, is that the building would be shared and rented out to agencies that fit with their purpose. And and the idea was that there could be like one stop shop for people who had a need for related services, so that's one thought, but so we had a good discussion and my feeling is that they're just being very prudent. They're and they're being very open and transparent about that this is, things have changed and so they want to start to look at it with fresh eyes and see if it's still possible, yeah. Mary Claire, can you want to add something?
Each agency has revised also the number of classrooms that they're going to need. They've downsized the number of classrooms, they they're not going to need as many as they did four years ago. So that's another issue being addressed.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it, keep us posted, bring it up again. Trash recycling ad hoc committee, I think you've Silliman hit on that before, maybe Mr. Carpenter can grab a hold of this, but they, I I've got numerous people that's not my friends, but they're probably eight or so that have been contacting the older, something the hurdle, the older older generation wants to visit two people in the household, they generate a little bit of trash, so that's a, that's a considered option, that seems to be the biggest thing. The survey has gone out, we've got quite a few responses and I encourage everybody to also to go to our website, get, grab ahold of that survey, get that survey. That's closing the hair, we'll close out and have that for the next, the twenty person, we do that at our next meeting. So until the twentieth, that survey will be open, so get a chance to do that survey, don't forget about our Youth Bureau survey as well for the park. We want to get that information, so we get that done too, when does that close?
Tomorrow at midnight.
Yeah, tomorrow at midnight, so everybody stay up all night for the survey. Perfect, all right, so did you, Mr. Carpenter, do you want to address the recycling, is there anything else that we just don't today?
No, it's just, I think it's moving forward, what, we decided we're going to have the next meeting, we decided that.
Uh, yeah, I think that's good, I have, I think we did that at the last meeting.
There's, you know, there's people that still want to do that, so, right, so, you know, but like you said, it's going to be cheap.
Yeah, so it's possible, I think once they get the whole picture of a good plan, you know, we get adapted, address all of it. I'm sure there are going to be people who are going to be left, that are going to be concerned and left behind, that they feel like they're left behind, that's not the intent, we have to do what's best for the general. That's coming along well, Town Gion and Ad-Hoc Committee will update on that, working on getting the college together, it's emailed and they keep sending back. I'll do it on the, on the other day, so now I have a meeting with Dr. Peter Baum, I'm not sure, is that next week, probably? Yeah, so we're trying to get this to the next level, we need to shift this here to the next level. Yeah, okay, you can come to that, can you make sure Miss Lanning is aware of that?
Aye.
And it's regarding some other things which I'll update you on the way there, with with some issues that we're having. So so we'll update you that, hopefully we get to a good response to that, we've got a great list of items, we had preliminary meeting, but it needs to go to the next level. And that'll be happening, so we'll keep it on the agenda, the force of the hat. One more item I want to just grab ahold of real quick, you know, and see if I could get tacit approval, I know this is a little bit awkward, but our sidewalk program went really well, we've had a great response to it and of course we've earned that money. And if you remember, I said I would probably come back and ask for more money, so here we are, so it's it's it worked out very well and and I've met with a couple other mayors of recent, a conference I went to regarding housing, which was last week, I can bring it up in the mayor's report, but that couple of housing options that we had, so I'm going to visit the land bank up in Syracuse and visit with other mayors too, so that's a great ideas on that end of it, that'll be more to come. But and also on how to manage and be more aggressive on our sidewalk program, so a couple of good ideas there, which I'll move forward, but I'd like to just get just a tacit approval to discuss, it's not on the agenda, but it will be on the agenda next meeting, the tacit approval, so I can get, we have a lot of applicants that are out there that I don't want to take, miss the advantage of the time or the weather and the structure to get the, the sidewalks done, but I'd like to just allocate another twenty, twenty five thousand dollars to do that. Tacit approval from everybody here.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
And and again, that would come out of the the COVID funds, if you will, and we'll do that, so we'll have a resolution at the next meeting.
Very good.
All right, so that's what I had, so I guess.
Real quick on that, does, and obviously, so let's talk to former developer, all right?
Yes.
Maybe, can you see where we are on the list, maybe we need to go to thirty?
Yes, well, I I did look at it before and I don't know if it's grown since then, but.
Okay, I just don't want to cut it too short.
Yeah, we'll keep hammering it.
We're willing to do it.
Right, let's keep it, keep it going, it's been great and I'm glad to see some of these people take advantage of it.
You also discuss whether or not income property should benefit from the program.
Yeah, we can, we'll put that out on the next, on the resolution passes, yeah.
Policy currently, it's rational.
Yeah, it is residential. Yes, but so correct, the way we kind of look at it is like they're getting a residual income from it. So but if there is a way we can make one or a lot of people do it, so and real quick, just a quick discussion to think about, one of the things I would force in the next resolution, the next meeting is a resolution to have apartments out there, the ability for them to put their sidewalk, to to pay, have the sidewalk and sewer lines, water lines to be put into their building or their home and we will put it on their taxes, spread it over a five year period. This, I think, would be a great way to do it, where a lot of people, I've talked to constituents that have had sidewalks, they're doing portions at a time because they can only afford they're trying to be, but if they could roll that into today's cost and do it today and then we carry that for five years, they work into that and they work, it's added to the taxes, we're not going to get stuck with it. We spread it over a five year period, this is a way I think we could be even more aggressive to getting this, getting our sidewalks repaired, which is our problem, I have another picture of one of our employees had sent me a picture, it's a trip and fall, it's not, it's not a good situation. We need to get it addressed, so I think this might make it go faster and also take care of some of the issues that we're going to incur down our main street with sewer lines that need to be replaced and they're like, you're not making this, we're not digging it up later, so we need to create an option for them to be able to do that and be able to, if storm sewers need to get into those, some of the water lines need to be replaced, sprinkler lines need to be put in for future use, all those kind of things, if we can do that, spread it over a five year period, that'd be admirable.
I like that idea, I just feel that people who are making money off their property, I understand that it's residential, but we have so many so many rental properties and I feel that people who are making money off of their property, they have income property, they should be already investing back into that property and that the sidewalk program should be owned on by residential.
It is, that is what it is.
Yeah.
That's what he said. That's all it is, that's what it is, so that is the case, so but but unfortunately, sometimes you know, better sidewalks are not going to bring you more rent, right?
Right.
So that's what we need, that's what we need to be a little more aggressive.
Extra incentive is.
Have we given extra incentive, cast that over a five year period, I think we would take it. So that's, again, that's that's for the next meeting and just get your, get your, so. Motion for adjournment. Scott, Mr. Beckwith, hold the favor.
Aye.
I need to adjourn, thank you.